Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started on it. Um, why don't you start for us, please?
Yes, John. So today I work on this bear Google place. And I expired thing. So Jerry provided me that update filter. So I'm using Jerry. I need to ask you how many day after we'll check. So for currently I've added one eighty days.
Oh, yeah, look, look, let's open this up a bit further. So. Ahmed's working on verifying that a place on Google is still in operation, like making sure that the hours are up to date. How often should we check every week, every other week, every month?
How does that work if we have a hundred thousand businesses?
It would be when whenever like you load the profile. So it wouldn't all at the same time. So when you would load a profile, we would see if that profile has. And you know, profiles like two weeks old. And if so, we'll like recheck to see if it's in business.
With yeah.
Hmm.
So how often we will check it? I will add that in day.
Hmm. But we don't want to check every time the user loads a profile?
Hmm. Every time like what the logic Jerry added one field when we last checked. Like last status last checked. So we will use that field. And if it is, it will it will always been our defined it. Then we will not check. Otherwise, if it will cost that day, we will check it.
Hmm hmm. Okay. Um. Well. What were you saying, Derek?
Oh, no, I wasn't.
I would say every month or every three months will be good.
And. What is the problem if we checked every time it slows things down?
I mean, yeah, I recall. I I I don't think we should be calling Google every time.
Okay. Um, then yeah, maybe once. Once a month.
Okay. So that thing I'm working on and one I was once if you're comfortable testing and create the.
And if the business is closed. Let's say.
So I will return a flag that Google business uh status.
So we'll need a front end change to display that.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Hmm.
Well, no, we would. We have, we'd be showing the hours right a minute.
That's true. Would it be part of that same call?
Yeah. So like they changed their hours or if they're closed, wouldn't it say closed in the hours?
It might. It might say permanently closed or temporarily closed or whatever. You know, they have some different options there.
Right.
Um, can we test it?
Uh, well, I mean, it would have to make his his updates first.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, because I was thinking at the very least, just test. One, just one business, right? We know you know that one is closed. And to see if the front end will display that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you. Let let me know when you're ready for that and we'll continue on. Okay, thanks. So Jerry, why don't you give us your update?
Hey, uh, web stuff. So well, first of all, we made some optimizations to database still more of. I didn't really go kind of overboard on anything yet. Just made sure we had some. Reasonable changes, optimizations that I've been finding. Uh, the only thing I haven't really gotten to because that that's going to take some time in testing is the service broker. Um, I I believe the changes I've made now have done a lot of good. Uh, mostly involves, you know, running anything in parallel that could be in parallel. Um, and what else we got? Uh, I also made a new version of contact upload mutation for Ismail to try out whenever he gets back. Um, I gave him all the information he needs. So if, you know, he feels better today, he has everything he needs to work on it if he wants to work on it today.
Okay, and what will that um achieve?
Well, that should achieve improvement in the time of uploading contacts. Because like you said, that there is a separate job that runs every time you upload contacts and it could really just. It really only has to be ran once and it had ran after all the contacts are uploaded. So it's basically separating our one query into two queries. This is really going to benefit people with larger contact books.
That's fantastic. Hopefully, um, it works. Okay, so we need Ismail to test it.
Well, we needed him implemented first.
Right, okay.
And it is too is that because it's kind of like double parts. I gave Ismail the idea of, you know, we can have. Like an extra text block that shows because we have the um, the last query. Like last mutation will may take five seconds or something. And then that's where we can like show, hey, you know, you know, just finishing up a few more seconds. Just okay, the responsiveness of it.
Yeah, um, yeah, that was the tricky part with that um text appearing to um.
In fact, now we know the progress because it's a two step deal.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. Well, when Ismail comes back, we'll uh ask him about that.
Yep.
And. Go ahead.
And also, um, we have our uh list of groups that can be. Like we have our groups that we kind of give protections over. We, you know, just are very are very large groups that we're organizing. Uh, I just created a centralized check function for that, just to make sure it's easier to manage. Uh, because you know, we're we're building out more groups uh before we really get the full moderation suite in there. For admins, I'm just adding them to a list where only the internal people can remove others. Um, I mean, we have our internal team list. Let's see where I also added, let's see. Since we have, yeah, I added Zane to the list of people that could remove other people since it looks like he's organizing a lot of large groups.
Yeah, that's good.
So uh, yeah, those are the changes I made there.
Okay, we have and we have some designs for like a whole admin, you know.
Yeah, we do. And yeah, that's that's a lot of, that's a big rabbit hole.
Yeah, so I guess this is a quick, quick fix, right?
Yeah, it's a quick fix. It should prevent people uh from removing like, you know, just going in and dropping everybody from the group or.
Yeah, and you already put that restriction on some of our bigger groups, right, from the backend?
Yeah, yeah, I just I just updated the list. I added a. Added a few more, like the investor chat. I put the investor chat in there. And like I said, some of the big group of saints running.
Okay, cool. Excellent. Good job.
And let me. Show a little detail. We show a little sneak peek. This is not done. It's not close to done. Um. But we got. So this is you, just imagine that everything in the phone is perfect for a second.
Okay.
Because it's it's not even close, but right now, okay, this name is going to be changed to, but. I was thinking that the landing page could look like this, like join me in circles.
Yeah, yeah, like where it's going, definitely.
Yeah, and then um I put at the bottom, it says, follow John Worthington and say hi on circles. They want to share their favorites with you.
Cool, great.
And then um, let me do like a profile. This is something I haven't pushed live yet, but I worked with Ian with it quite briefly. So if you go into tech to you, let me actually make sure I have a little bit of information in here too. So this would be part of the core flow. Yeah, you go and you hit next. Uh, you have this page to work on and it would be like this.
Great, okay. Yeah, we talked about this yesterday.
Yeah, this isn't pushed up yet, but this is in my local, ready to push up at any time.
Okay, cool. Ian's not here though, is he? Uh, is he? No, he's not. Um. And what about the backend part of this? Like, uh, he was gonna work, I think, with with Mauro on.
Uh, let me, let me see if I got a quote from here.
Okay.
Um. They don't have anything except he said he was getting run by you for final approval. But I think when I did talk to him, he said that. Mauro already has a cron job running that is like tracking all the users who favored it tech to you. So they're being put in like a list like in field three, showing that they're eligible for the discount.
Okay. Um, but then what about as far as like there was, it has to uh apply it. I guess that's what you're you're saying. Like, so once they, if they do follow through this, it'll apply it to the next service.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of what it sound like. Uh, Ian was saying that there was a system alert. That's built into the customer's profile and field three that if they favored it, like it pops up that they're eligible for this discount.
Okay, okay, cool. Um.
So, yep, um, I'll I'll need to, so I'm gonna be working on.
Is this an actual, is this a live webpage, like a URL landing page?
That's what I'm saying is that it is not live anywhere. This is, this is a working demo in my.
That's what I mean. Yeah, that's like it's on the web.
This uh, no, this is on my machine. It can push to the web at any second.
Hmm, okay.
It just. I just don't want to interfere with, like, so we sent out our cortex at six yesterday, so we didn't. Push it for yesterday. So nobody who got the the text messages yesterday would have seen this.
Okay. Okay, cool. Um. I'll do a little cleanup on here, but um.
Grab a screenshot?
Yeah, we send that to me.
Yeah, okay. Well, oh, well, I have it in the group. It's in a group with me, you, Ian, Todd.
Is it? Okay, yeah, Slack?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, great.
Yep, so I'll be cleaning that up and. I'll do some digging into potentially adding amplitude on here because I know you're asking like for. Statistics, how many people pushed a tooltip, how many people like one button people click. And and a lot of that stuff is really stuff like um, I was tracking just the overall. Like people who clicked through the database. They're trying to get really granular on that. That would best be for amplitude.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to know on some of those buttons, obviously.
For example, if we want to know like on the business page, how many people clicked hard, how many people click, you know, certain components. And see which ones are clicked on more, we can uh, that would be for amplitude.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That reminds me, did did you have a number for me? Like if if we looked at the daily report of all the new. Or all the invites that were sent, how many actually clicked on? The invite link in their text message, but then abandoned it at the app store?
Let me see if I can get that for you in the next minute. Um. Um, let's see. It's portal, we're going to the invite links. Invite. Okay, web student, web store, I'm listed. Circles invite tracking. Um. Is this? So these like keys. Yeah, this is tricky. Um. Because a lot of these are like camp, there's campaign links and then there is the direct invite links. So they'd have to be handled differently where like one of invite.
Actually, ideally, if you could break it down.
Right, both ways. So there's just calculations that would have to be done here.
The more, the more valuable one for me is the one that's. The straight invite link, like one user presses the pink button to invite another person in their contact. That's that's the one I'm most interested in.
And and uh, let's see, I could probably tell you which one is clicked. And. I think we could run something to see which one is clicked. And then see, i- i- they come from two different databases right now. Uh, Robinson set up a database that has all this information, but it's in MySQL. So to connect it to the SQL Server database that actually has the full follow through. That's where I'm like, okay, it's not so straightforward because it's got to link together the two databases.
I see.
Yeah, he 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 liked to do his own thing in MySQL because it was his own little thing.
Yeah.
So.
Um, but the link itself doesn't have. Tracking on it?
I don't know what you mean by the link itself doesn't have tracking.
Well, when it's generated, you know, if I hit the invite button, it generates a link.
Hmm.
Um. Do we like if I invite you right now, and do I know if you clicked the link in your text message?
Yes, I know if it's clicked.
Okay, but then we don't know. Well, because and then we just need to match. Did that phone, we get your phone number, obviously, right at that point?
Well, we had it. Or we have it if you sent it via that direct invite link.
Yeah, so now we know that you clicked it. Uh, and then we could match that against did that phone number onboard. Ever.
Correct.
And there's no straightforward way you're doing that?
I'll have to, I'll have to really dig into that logic, but not really.
Okay, so in the case of if I invite you, you click on the link, we know that happened. That's pretty easy to get that information, right?
Yeah, I know, I know I viewed it. Like, I I know the link was generated and I know I clicked it.
Okay, so we would know, we would know that for. Anybody yesterday?
Yeah, and uh, I could, I mean, I could get that if you want that in a daily report. I actually have that in the report.
That's which a call is that?
Um, well, I don't have it in the report right now. I'm saying I can throw it in the report.
Okay, um.
Because like I have, let's see where.
I mean, you have viewed, but that's not the same.
Um.
Or is it?
Wait, viewed, let's see. So let me pull in, let me pull up their report.
Me too. Um. So we have. Invite views non campaign. Invite views campaign.
Oh, yes, that would be um. That is what we're um looking for.
So yesterday.
That's an overall summary.
Yeah, but that that some of them may have joined. Right? So like yesterday, fifty six people clicked. The invite, campaign invite link.
Let me pull um.
Did twenty eight people click?
What report are you looking? I'm looking at the report that just came in.
Yeah, this morning.
For campaign?
Actually, maybe I was looking at yesterday. Sorry, I was looking yesterday. Um, I'm looking at today's. Today is thirty four.
Yeah, and that would be main.
Yeah, so thirty four people clicked the link.
Yes.
Okay, then and the um, the non campaign one, that's ten. So that's ten people clicked the link that got invited?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
So, so you look at the report, there's a hundred invite requests, non campaign. That's how many were sent. And then ten would be how many view? And then from the ten, eight came into the app. But we don't have the one thing in between, which is how many people clicked and went to the app store, but did not download the app. That's the, that's what it sounds like you're looking to track.
Yeah. Let me, let me take a closer look at this. So. For the non campaign one, yesterday, there's ten clicks on it.
Hmm.
And eight. People on boarded from the non campaign link.
Correct.
But.
So there were two people who viewed and did not onboard. And where do we get that? That could be either they um. They did not click that the download button or they did not download from the app store.
Yeah. Um, let's um. I don't want to hold everybody up, but actually I don't want to lose my train of thought. Let's go to the day before. Day before is bigger members.
Hmm.
Okay. Day before, I was actually two days before, a minute ago, the day before we had twenty eight. Views fifteen enrolled. Um.
Yes.
So. In the daily report, the invites enrolled, we don't know if they're a campaign or it's.
We do.
Right, we do.
Yeah, we have campaign and non campaign.
Well, not in the list of names.
Oh, in the list of names, um. And so you're talking about in that invite he's enrolled? We could totally say they're traffic source.
Yeah, that might be helpful.
Could totally add that in there. I mean, I'm going to tell you right now, like people are still coming in from Rob's link.
Well, yeah, and I can see that because his name.
Right, and it's campaign links, like Rob's not messaging those people. They're coming from the link on his Instagram or something.
Yeah, um. Okay, yeah, let's come back to it. I'm gonna, I want to deep dive deeper into it, hold everybody up. Um, Ahmed, you had something you wanted to say?
Uh, yes, John. So I tested it uh for that the closed business we are getting from the Google and not found.
So what, what's not found that ours are not found?
Profile itself not found.
Profile itself not.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, here's one a minute. Um, know how we have that, uh, what's it called? The.
What I'm doing, what I'm doing, uh, Jerry, in that case, what we will. The status we will get not found, can we say local profile that ours is equal to close? Since we are returning hours here, I will show you. Hmm. Let me up my system one that, give me one that. So we are getting hours there and hours it is showing the business hour. In hours, we can return a status as closed.
Wait, so you do have a status of closed?
Yes, I wonder. Just to know.
Okay.
Let me do that. Yeah, call here. This is for uh close one seventeen. See, what we are getting here, response. Uh, when we're doing the, the provided place ID is no lo- no longer valid. Please refresh asset place ID as per. This one.
Yeah, so we have, we have an expiration date for place IDs in Google. I have the.
Yes.
Are we respecting?
It is the.
Are are we respecting that? Like, what are we doing when that date hits?
Uh, so see, wha-. What we are doing now, we are just when we are hitting it currently, we are going to Facebook our database. We are not doing a dual call. We're fetching it from our database.
Yeah, but what, but what happens after we hit that date? So we're not doing anything after that date?
No, no, currently we are not doing.
I thought we were. I thought we had. Some script or something that ran to update. No?
No, 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 don't. You you can see we have expired it here, but we are not doing anything based on this expiry date currently. Google expired it.
Okay, and that's if the Google ID expired. It doesn't necessarily mean. The business is in the not open for business. Or removed from Google. It could still be. A valid business. Don't they refresh or recycle their Google IDs like periodically? Isn't that right, Ahmed?
Hmm, so according to my research, it is not returning like that means place they itself not exist in a Google.
These places are.
Yeah, so what is it saying? So let's go there.
Wait, so you tried to look at you, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you look for tech to you. I mean, tech to you is in Google.
Yeah, I mean, we have a few locations, but even that closed location, I'm pretty sure still is. Let me double check real quick.
This is for the closed location, Jerry. Not for a tech to you. See, they see this is a tech to you is closed one. And Google ID, this is for location. Perox, CA, California. Nine five six two one. And we have their Google ID in database. When I do the, using this Google ID status call, we are getting. That business is not valid. Like the provider place that is no longer valid.
Yeah, might not be showing up actually in Google anymore. It's been closed for a few years.
So what does it say right now for fire up?
See, I think it's. Close.
In Google, but it says temporarily, temporarily closed.
It does say temporarily closed, yeah.
But it's in Google.
It is, yeah. Yeah, so that will be good. It should say temporarily closed.
Hmm.
But yeah, the tech to you ferrocks location doesn't show up on Google, Google places anymore, looks like.
And for finally sixty worth it. It's sweet with it. We are getting for fire up in J V's.
Okay, so, okay, that's, that's good to know. But and we can, we see it's closed temporarily. Good. Okay.
I hear it's permanently closing and seeing this.
Sorry, what's that?
Can you see, can you see here one parameter permanently closed? It's coming as true.
Interesting. I just Googled it. So temporarily closed.
Right, Google says temporarily closed and then also says permanently closed at the same time.
So.
I mean, the status is temporarily closed. So I feel like we should be looking at the business status more than the permanently close.
Yeah, the business status is the accurate one. Now, will will that display on the front end currently or do we need to? Add it.
What I mean, what you can do is you could, you should be able to just change the hours to temporarily closed. If that's what it is.
Okay, so I will do that, no problem. I will do that. So for in that case, I will do that. What about if you will not get the business like uh, fire, sorry. Uh, take to you. What do we do in that case?
Can we, hmm, I don't want to display anything. Yet I don't want to do anything because I'm worried that maybe we're getting some false negatives here. Could we? Could, could we track these? Maybe we want to track these that are showing not found. And to some, at least for now. And then we can back, we can come back to them and then manually review them and see if Google returning not found is accurate.
Okay, okay, okay. So what I will do, I will create that CSV list and share with all the team, all all of the you and the.
Oh, awesome. You're gonna run a script per.
Yep. Yeah, so I will handle this case, business status case.
Okay, that'll be helpful. I want to see how it appears, though. Can we test? When you change that.
No, you cannot test it, no.
Well.
I can go in QA and do it.
That's what I was thinking, just, just on one business in QA? Just to see if it does show up properly on the front end. So that, you know, the user will see.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, but look, no, there.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me just do it with fire up in QA. Cool.
Yeah.
You're doing it a minute?
So, uh. Are you doing from a database side or can I do it from the code side?
I'm doing it from the database, from the database.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right, let me know, and then let's continue with our updates. Okay, thank you. So, Amin, how is it going? Can we get an update?
Okay. Um, yeah, and. Uh, to begin, um, before starting my update, uh, it's made the main message like the builds are failing. Like an hour ago, and and I fixed it, did a fix and the build it's on the way. The input is already there, but the iOS it's still running outside the fix that I did.
Okay, I was wondering why I didn't see a build, yeah, okay, you said Android is available now for install?
We, I think it's not pushed, I need to push it, uh, let me see. Uh, which was just one button, okay, well, yeah, the end goal is done, is finished, the iOS it's on the way.
Okay, that's gonna be dot one four?
Uh, fourteen.
Okay, yeah. So Todd and Chantel, there should be a new test field for. Did, what did you say?
Oh, I said, okay, cool, I'll grab it.
Okay, great.
Let me check right now, is it there or not, uh, because the bill is done on GitHub, just some chicken, the Google console.
And Chantel, who you check?
I'm looking it up right now. I still have thirteen as the latest version.
Yeah, I don't see in Google Console, that's that's, let me see. Oh, yeah, I have to, um, I'm something with the manually, it will be like there in ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay, I'll check.
Did you know what I did in a development chat for Fire Up? This is in QA.
Okay.
Yeah, speaking of development chat, John, this is your reminder about the podcast.
Oh, yeah, thank you. That was, it's actually, well, we'll finish with me next, so we'll talk about that. Okay, let me charge my test phone, Jerry, give me one sec. Um, okay, so go ahead, Amin, can you continue?
Yeah, and yesterday I was with Ismail on our workstation. To get the iOS eighteen contacts done and working. Um, I mean, it was working just like some changes he did with the with the running doctor were not working now. Uh, expected as in the iOS eighteen version. So we worked on it, have it all done, um, also we fixed those. UI jumping that was there, some flickering, so that would be in the in this build. Um, also like I worked on the new universal links. Now Jerry sent me for entertainment and users. That's that, that's also much that should be in the this next build as well. So you share on entertainment or. Or user profile, it should, um, the universal link should to get to that screen.
Okay, good, for entertainment profiles and user profiles?
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Also, uh, I fixed an, um, an issue like with, uh. Um, the subscription for the unread count, it was causing the, uh. That subscription was causing another query to be fixed again all the time, Jerry did some backend work too. So we don't have to do that, and now it's fixed from the front end as well. It will, we're not doing additional API, so we'll make things faster for the database. Also, one thing is that I fixed. See. Yeah, and, um, like I was working, there's another issue. I need to share my screen, let me see.
You might be muted.
I'm sucking you. And so the thing is that I was wanted to work on, but I like, um, I have question about is like. I don't know, like we said, we're gonna be doing some work here if a user trying to, um. Add members by a group, for example, like, uh, it's this one called second. And we're gonna say like add, he right now it says ten members, but this actually has like, uh, more than that. It's just the ten members because we only get ten members from from the API.
Yeah, yeah, that was a temporary. Solution for immediate, um. You know, repair in in production. Mm hmm. Right, Jerry?
Yes.
But we don't want that permanently, so. What was the permit, what was the long term answer?
Uh, there, there is an extra, there's a different field that you have to look at in the graph to all of me.
Yeah, remember it comes. Number two. Yeah, so the the member count, that's, that's okay, that's not what I was like gonna talk about, but let's say. Um. Here, like, I already like, is there's I made Raj, let me already add the element. And. Type twice, so, so. Okay, uh, now it's fine, because as expected, uh, don't mind the count that will be accurate, but like. Like for the list of members here, since I I made Raj, it was in this first like ten ten members, I was able to, um. Subtract that from the total count and also like remove his name from this list of members. But let's say the I made Raj, it was not in the first ten. That were I were returned from the back end, I would. I have no way to know that, to know that I'm Mirage is already selected. And it's already in this group, then subtract it from here. With this, uh, I would not be able to do that.
So you were able to before, right?
Yes, I were, because I was having the whole list of the members, but now I only have ten, so.
I see. Do you have an idea, Jerry, how to solve that?
What's that?
Do you have an idea of how to solve this?
What does the issue mean, sorry?
Okay, yeah, so, um. Right now, I'm only getting ten members from a group.
Ten, I thought I was bringing eleven.
Ten, I don't know that, let's say eleven, let's say twenty, it's okay.
Yeah, I thought I thought I was returning eleven because I knew that the cutoff was ten, but. But go on.
Yeah, so, um, like, it's only like ten, for example. And I already selected like I'm a Raj, like as a person, like as a as a user. Uh, let me do it from the beginning, see, so.
I actually, I actually did this today, um. In production and it, you know, it's, it work, we're like, I would, I already had some people. In. A two field. So like, it it's a better, it's a better illustration, I mean, if you put like three names in there. And then. Go to add a group. You can really see the difference. Of, um. Like, you don't want to duplicate the members, obviously. And. So what it does is it's it, I did this today, it selects, like I had. Two of the people already up there, but but I wanted like two more of the people in this other group. And it it was smart enough to know. So you want, you want these two people, basically, because it had the whole member count. So like in this case, right, so you have two names in there, right, I mean. And then, and then you trying to select a group of ten?
Well, this has ten, but like this group is like ten thousand or something. So the issue is like. Like I'm at Raj and Danny, they are in the first ten that I'm given, but if they are not. I will be, um, reporting a wrong member count here. And also like, uh, listen, the names here as well, I mean. I'm not sure if that.
This group has ten thousand in it?
Yeah.
You, let's use, let's use the smaller groups just as an example to get a.
Smaller, it's not issue, smaller, they has ten, we only returning ten, the issue is like, when you have a group that has more than.
More than eleven or whatever, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see, I I get what you're saying, I don't know if Jerry's getting it.
Um, now, are we talking about like adding a group, like if so, if. Well, like, if you select a big group, what do we do if you already have a name in the field?
Yeah, or two names or four names, we don't want to duplicate the names.
I, I'm. I feel like we go, we go back to the group, so if there's. Amit and Danny, how about, ooh. This could be interesting, so. If let's say there's Maggot Army, we have a big group and Amin wants to add a mit to it, a mit is not part of Maggot Army. What we should do is we could call the mutation to add a mit to the group. And then. The mutation to create message. So we're not making a new group.
Um, but here like we're composing a new message, right?
Yeah, so this could be a new group.
But we don't, the the point is that we don't want, for for big groups, we don't want to make a new group.
True.
We don't want people making ten thousand person chats, that's why we set this limit at ten. The way you could work it around is if they want to send it to somebody who's not in the group, just add them to the group. Before sending it.
I'm thinking about this, um. What were we doing before in this case? If there was already a name there, I guess I can do it in production. So if there's already a name and then I try and. Add a really large group.
I don't think we want, we don't want them to make a new group. That's gonna be a problem, we've already had that problem.
Right, we don't want that, so right now what happens? If I hit yes, it replaces those names with the name of the group. Right, hit, what happens if you hit yes here, I mean?
Okay, so, yeah, it's just the group name.
Now it's adding the group plus those other two members.
Yes. It, well, those two other members that they are already in this group. They're already a member of this group.
That's true, so that doesn't mean, that's not even really accurate then.
Yeah.
Now, what I just tested it in production, it, what happened is those two names disappeared and just. Where your cursor is, that name appears.
Okay.
Which is better.
Yeah.
Because it like groups them all. So that's currently in production right now. So that's.
Uh, let me see, maybe, uh, one second.
Okay, I mean, it did say add ten members, obviously, that's not accurate.
Um. You mean like a five minutes, I will do a rebuild with another branch? And we'll look into this again, because, uh, this is not what I was looking at yesterday.
Okay. What branch?
I looked at, I I was like in the in another branch that's not up to date with Dev.
Okay.
Um, okay, let me do this.
Jerry, I just got a notification. For a message came into this, the circles investors chat, this happened to me a couple of times already today. But it's not updating my lobby, why? I thought we were speeding some of this stuff up, so I I know if I leave and come back. My lobby message will get updated with the new. Messages came in, but currently nothing is, nothing is changed as far as my lobby view. I mean. And I was looking at the lobby.
Okay, your lobby is not updating, okay, um. I see.
There's another, there's another one, so like if you just look at the lobby. Uh, like on your screen, if you open it, you know, periodically. They're not.
I think they're delayed.
Well, how, I don't know, because I I've had it here for a while now, I I know if I leave and come back, it'll be instantly updated, right, so go fetch everything.
Mm hmm. But yeah, now this is not, this is not what I updated, this particular.
Um, I mean, is there a way to?
I can look into it and see if what what there is that we can do to improve it.
Okay, because I'm I'm pretty sure it's never going to update until I leave and come back, because it still has not updated.
Okay, uh.
Which may be a front end thing.
It it could, it it could, um, I mean, it could also be back in, you know, I I'm saying it could go either way here. Uh, well, no, okay, mine just updated. Kevin McBride, I just.
Did it? Yeah, because I got that one, but nothing is happening. I've now had three over the last two minutes.
Yeah, mine, mine just opened it again, thing not think.
Or, yeah, that one, this mine's not updating, so have I lost some kind of connection?
Uh, that, I mean, that's.
I mean, I'm, I'm getting the notifications, though, so like, it's not like I don't have an internet connection, did I?
Either you you're on, you got unsubscribed from.
Unsubscribe, yeah, how did I, how can I get unsubscribed, what is that? Maybe I had the phone in the background for a while? Um. Is there a way to? Like. Um, re-subscribe if I, if a user brings the phone in the foreground? And it's supposed to probably supposed to do that automatically, I'm pretty sure we've already.
Yeah, you should do that automatically.
But it's not sometimes.
And it looks like in whatever scenario that your your state your phone's in. Whether it's your phone or your account or whatever, that it is not updating.
Yeah, okay, so maybe.
I mean, another thing too is that I am, you're also in a lot more groups than what I am. And I'm just curious, so maybe it's not the number of people in the group, what if it's limited to the number of groups you're in? I haven't taken a look at this logic.
No, I I think it's the, I'm not subscribed, because maybe I came in. From a notification or something, or or I. I don't know where I was last. Um. Before I pulled, let me actually think about that, I was just.
Can you reproduce this with a test, like you you have your phone in a test phone in QA?
Yeah.
Maybe do that, and then that gives. Us all an opportunity. For see if we can look into why it's happening without interfering with the the real group.
Yeah, okay. We'll have to run some tests.
Speaking of, uh, there was a message from the the chat this morning, um, on a. Couple Android devices, it looks like they're having an issue. With swiping down the reactions drawer.
Yeah, I saw that.
I mean, I know I'm on iOS, everything works fine on iOS, but. They kind of works, kind of works sometimes, works and it doesn't.
Let's take a look at that, um. Well, keep hold that thought, let's finish up here. You got everything go, I mean, this is.
Yeah, this is the latest Dev and it's, um. It's not as you have in the bill and, uh, the production and Jerry, like the production. Does it send the four members or only ten?
We're only sending ten right now.
Like even in the production?
Um, yeah, in production, we're only sending ten.
Okay, uh, I'm not sure why this one is not behaving as.
Something changed, obviously. Um.
Yeah, it's possible if Amit and Danny are not in, like, in the first ten members. Then.
Yeah. That's. But, uh, John is having different behavior, like Danny and I mean, they get removed from here. So.
And it could be because they are part of those ten members.
Oh, I know what I did, by the way, I know what I did to make it lose the subscription. I I pressed the plus chop. I I pressed the plus chat button. And did a compose, but then hit cancel. Cause as soon as I hit the plus chat button again just now and hit cancel, it like refreshed my lobby. So, but we we make a note of that, we'll we'll test that again, maybe. Maybe test it with Chantel while we're like multitasking here, but um. And let me confirm what you just theorized. I mean, so, or I think you said it Jerry, so if they were in the first ten, they might not show up, so I could pick somebody. That's not in those ten, potentially. I want to test that out, so. My friend Chris. You got him. And then. Uh, you're right, you guys were right. Chris, I added my friend Chris who's not in the ten. And it looks like your screen, I mean, it didn't, it didn't merge them, so. But I guess if we had, if you had all the names, it would have, because that's how we set it up to be a kind of a fail safe. Some not let you make an identical group with ten thousand and then plus one. A person, so it's like almost identical group. Um, so we lost that. Ability. Dang, this is gonna be tricky, so but we need to solve it. So Jared, are you following what's going on here? You got a bit of a.
Feel like is we just, we have the names separate, okay? And then whenever you send it, like we don't merge them, we don't try to merge them, for these big groups, we don't merge it. What we do is we call the add member mutation. And we add the member, we're not, you don't get a duplicate, you won't get a duplicate system message if they're already in the group. But if they're not there, they'll get added.
So. Do that one more time.
The same mutation that you call from the 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 admin interface to add to add people in the group. Call that same mutation, add them into the group if they're not there. And then send the message. Then you don't have a dup, then you don't have a duplicate group, the new people get included in the group and the message is.
Were you following that, I mean?
I'm not sure about the mess, like the dashboard, like the mutation.
Like, so if you go into a group and if you go to like the manage members. Mutation to add members to group.
Said. Because I don't think I do, I have, is that like for everyone to add and remove groups, right?
We, yeah, so if you like go and you search for hit skip and just search like Brad, I don't know, just just search like a generic name.
Okay, um.
Or John, just somebody that won't be in the group. Yeah, so like if you were to select. Who aren't checked, a mutation to add them gets called, and when you hit save.
Yeah.
Well, wait, there's a, there's a bug on this screen unless, I mean, this.
What what, yeah, but bug aside on this screen if there.
Although the bug is misleading, these people may be in the chat.
Well, regardless if they're in this group or not, this is going by what we see, that they're not in the group, and if you click to check them. After you click save, then a mutation gets called to add them to the group.
Mm hmm, yeah.
We want to call that in the compose view, when you're in a big group. Let's call that in the compose screen and add them to the group before we send the message. And then everything should be clean in the end.
I see what you mean. And, um. And what's it, okay, so I want to use it. Uh, when is it gonna press send here, for example?
So let's, um, well, wait a minute, how come it didn't? Why didn't it do the uh merging? Like it does in production, because Amit's name was in those top, those first ten.
Yeah, I know this as well.
What's not even doing it if he's in the first ten? But that was at least, that was, I would, I want to kind of start from that point as our like square one. So like, okay, see the names are here, so we have Danny Hinkle, so. Wait, maybe Amit is not in this?
He's not in this because I knew that he's already selected and I remove it from the ten.
That's why, then, okay. Would he have been there originally?
Yeah, it would be.
Production, yeah, so in production, it would have, it would have eliminated him from the two field and just replaced it with the the group name. And that's, that's a pretty good solution.
Uh, well, okay, and this only applies if it they're in the first ten, that for people, we're a group with ten thousand people in it, that's very unlikely.
Well, that's the problem, yeah, before it used to be no problem because it had every single name, and then it would just. Detect if you were trying to add somebody that's already in it and would just eliminate them from the two field and just basically merge. Uh into the one group name, as it should. And um, no duplicate group message. So. I'd like, I like the function. Do you have an, is it possible to put an emulator up next to this in production, I mean, without like waiting fifteen minutes?
Let me see.
Just to get a base case, I want to, I want to do a side by side so we can see.
Okay.
Yeah, just remembered about this, but in about an hour, we need to go see a florist down the road. Thirty minutes. Yeah.
We should be able to get pretty far here.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's like, I got like.
While Amin is doing that, let's do the the side topic that Chantal brought up with podcasts, I know that you had looked at some permissions for. Like Android was questioning why we need the app to like run a background. Thing, and we need it for podcast, like when, if I go to listen to a podcast, I don't want to have to have my phone open and unlocked. Which currently. At least on iOS, it does need to be, otherwise after about ten minutes, my phone goes to sleep and the podcast stops.
Correct, that's that's background listening permissions.
Yeah, how do we overcome, I want, you know, obviously I want people listening to podcasts on circles, so what what do we need to do to make it?
This is. All front end, this is permissions that have to be set up, like. Like, like extra how Apple, you know, checks off for contact permissions.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, so this might be a good task for Wells, I think he's getting freed up.
Yeah, um, he may may need to work with Amin more on it, because it does require changes to the configuration of the build. Of of like the the project, so.
Okay, um, hey Wells, while we're multitasking here. You're, you're getting freed up, right, for some new tasks, right?
Yes, sir, I am, I'm wrapping some some other stuff here, but yeah, you're free to play some.
Okay, perfect, we we want to allow the phone to play a podcast, even if. The phone is in sleep mode, you know, like.
Hmm, I see, in background?
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah.
I don't know how to do that, but I'll be really excited to look into it.
Okay, yeah, let's, um, I know there's some permi- permissions that have to be. Well, we don't have to, Jared, we don't have to ask permission to the user, it's a different, like we have to get permission from Apple, right?
Correct, you just have to like check a box and in the project saying that. My app will wants to play media in the background.
Is Danny, yeah, did we, where did we leave off, did we end up just like not trying to get the permission with Android, I don't remember where we left off.
Sorry, which one are you talking about?
Playback.
Media player we were fine on.
On playback.
Uh, the, it was the location one we were having trouble with.
Interesting, so what we have the permission, but we don't, we're not utilizing it because Chantal's on an Android. And, right, your Android Chantal, if it goes to sleep, the podcast stops?
Yeah, I tried it on both my Android and my iPhone and it happened on both.
Okay, so we're not utilizing the permission, what were you saying, Ian?
Um, as of right now, though. They're not, they're not dinging us on either one of them, whatever update I did last is sneaking through.
Okay, so we, we have permission from Android, probably iOS to. To, so, so now it's more of a some type of front end configuration, is that right, Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay, so we just have to configure it to play. Whether the phone is uh in foregrounded or not. Yeah, you could uh investigate it.
Yeah, because I think you like, you could like even like just go to your home screen and it quits playing, like you don't even have to lock the simulator.
Right.
So, it it's gonna be, should be really easy to replicate.
That's true, Wells, will you test that out?
Yes, sir. Uh, Jerry, you you seem to have done some research about it, do you have any articles you want to perhaps share or?
I just know that background playback is a, is a permission.
Okay, okay.
Yes, look up, look up the term background playback, um, you know, and then for podcasts. Or like audiobooks that. You want to play in the background.
I know YouTube um uses that feature. Like if you don't, if uh like my YouTube videos, for example, if I my screen closes or goes black, it won't work if you pay for their premium service. It'll play in the background, so.
No, is that why, do you, I always wondered why YouTube would? I don't pay them, but.
Awful of that.
Pay him, it'll play in the background.
How lame. You just have that.
Yeah, Twitter is just awful with it, like you, like you have to force close the app, so like if you're watching a video and you background the app. It's gonna keep playing, you have to force close it.
Yeah, it's actually built into web browsers though on your phone now, so Safari and and Chrome. Both have the function now natively in both operating systems to keep your phone awake. It's actually the reason why I built the player page that exists on the Rad Radio website, because people kept complaining that their app. Like their app that's dedicated to stream audio goes to sleep when you turn the screen off.
But now doesn't?
No, it still does, I, people just can go to the website as an alternative. And they can turn their screen off and let the audio continue to play in the background, because it's running through the browser's permissions, which are inherent in the operating system. And they allow you to continue playing audio.
I see.
It's actually around with YouTube too, if you open up YouTube and Safari and play something. Typically, you can get it to continue playing and shut off your screen and keep the audio running. What's that, Jared?
Life hacks, don't play, don't use premium, just use.
But what do we do for our app then?
I, we, we are gonna have to get permissions unless we could somehow leverage the fact that the the local browser already has. Inherit inherent permissions, but I don't, I don't know that that would work, we could, we can investigate it. Um, but it would be, I I would assume it would be a lot better if we could just get them to approve background. Um, functionality, I can, I don't see any reason why they would deny it.
I don't, I don't see so either.
I got distracted for a second, where do we move off?
I think best path forward is to see what we can do to utilize the native permissions.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, okay, so Wells, once you dive in on that.
Sure thing, so Jared, just to be sure, I I am, I'm fully understanding, what's the, what's the next step you actually want me to take a look at? What's happening, what we have already and what we have, want to have?
Right, so make sure that we have any permissions that Apple and Google require for background media playback. Make sure we have those permissions enabled, and then there. Let's test it out in the app, if well, if they're not enabled, get them enabled, and then test them out, and then we go from there and see if it's working or not.
Okay.
Okay, let's uh have you dive into that Wells, and then I mean, it looks like you're, you have a production build up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, if you were to add another group. Uh, nine one six?
Nine one six?
Yeah. Uh, well, we can do the second one. And hit yes. Hey, oh, was Danny not in that list of people? Um, this is production?
This is from this flight, like the latest this flight.
Wait, I thought we, I was gonna, I wanted to show you in production.
The production, okay, let me, let me.
So, I don't think, this is gonna take a minute. But, um. Let's see. You know, while we're talking about this podcast thing, I'd also like a listen live button. Um, Ian, are you still here?
Yep.
Well, need to figure this per the show, like there's no, I don't think there's a database we can pull from, but we do have a link to the feed for for Rad. So we set it up for that.
So maybe that would be a web based um view?
Though, I think we could use the same media uh link, like Ian, do you have, do you have a link for the audio feed for Red? Or maybe I could just find it from the uh thing.
Yeah, I have the backend link available, it's a, um, I think it's called an RSTP screen, stream.
Yeah.
Let me see, I'm opening up the encoder right now, um.
I mean, I I have. Yeah, I got a link literally to the to the stream.
To the audio? The live one? What?
Oh, sorry, that was me, I was like, where on earth is this audio coming from?
Um, you have, you have a direct stream URL?
Well, this is, like, I'm, I'm gonna send you what I have right now, it's a Radio Mass IO.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's it, where did you get that?
Inspect element.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's it, um, it looks like they added possibly some content to what you sent over, but yeah, that's, that's effectively it, that's the. I think, I can't remember the name of the format, but it's like RSTP or RMTP, something like that. And that is the stream, I do have to probably authorize our server as an available stream source.
Ooh, so wait, it has to proxy through our.
It might, um.
Well, we could probably, we said we probably could, oh, use it as like a web view.
Let me check, I I I I may have even turned that off, because I didn't really care if people embedded it other places. Um, let me look.
I mean, that phone on the left is production?
Yeah.
Now it's not doing it for me, so I'm super confused. Um, and I see it's not doing it for you, so like, let's do, let's try one more thing and make sure we're doing similar comparison, get rid of Danny out of the left side. Okay, now, what if you tried to tap into that two field?
I cannot.
Right, okay, try it on the phone on the right. You gotta add add the group chat first.
Yeah, I, as well.
You can or cannot?
I cannot, like, it's disabled.
Okay, so that's good, that's one fails safe we have there, that's protecting duplicates. But there was, there was one, I just did it, where it merged, it like it got rid of the name. That I had there. Once I selected the larger. Group in product, I'm doing, I just did it in production, but now it's not. Let me try. I have a feeling that may know how, why. No, it didn't do it. Why is it now not? What did I do differently? This makes no sense to me. I mean, I just did it right. I, I put a name. In there. Maybe it was because there was two names? Let me try that. Is that possible? Maybe that was the difference? No, now it's. Just keeping them all up there. For me, and I just did it. Where it removed the first person that was there. I'm so confused how this is happening. I don't know what, how, what, unless Jerry made a change on the backend in the last few minutes. I don't know why it's doing different behavior.
No changes here.
It doesn't make any sense to me at all now, um. I for sure saw. The names go away and were replaced with the group chat name. Maybe I was a different group chat. No, it won't do it. This makes no sense. Okay, well, I'm, I'm really baffled, because now it's not doing the same thing I just saw it do, um. With, which, now I'm questioning, did we ever have logic to do it? But it, it certainly did happen.
I'm looking to go, there's a logic to, to do that, um, and it's like for groups that has. Yeah, if a group has more than, we hit like ten, more than ten, then it's gonna be the cool. So it's merged them in, so.
Yeah, but it now it's not doing it. In production or on your simulator there. So that doesn't, I, I don't get that.
John, was this before or after I did the uh? I did the change, I only pulled the top ten names. This was yesterday.
No, no, this is just a few minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just did it right, right in front of me. I had, I had, um, had two names. And then I tried to add also a big group chat to the, to the two field. And as soon as it said, it said like add, you know, ten, ten members, and I said, okay. It removed the two individuals from the two field and just left. The group chat, which was a good safeguard there, like. So I'm like, okay, so that's, that's.
I see.
No, I can't reproduce that.
I didn't change anything to the back end related to that and, or anything in the backend at all today for sure.
Perhaps I. Came from. The member stream now. That's now it's not, it was composed. Perhaps it was the name. Well, and, and Amin sees it in the code that we actually have it there too. Okay, one name just disappeared. Okay, I got one name to disappear. Go, go back to your, well, when you're done, I mean, go back to your emulator. Okay, go here, let's recreate what I just did. So keep Danny there. Go ahead with Danny first. Yeah, and then Todd. That one, okay, then type, um. Maybe, wait. Actually. I might, I might have confused myself. Try, try typing, um. Tori. And then scroll down, well, no, I wanna add a chat, a group chat from that list.
Like the Tori in, like the group chat?
But I saw this, the investors chat, that's not one of the choices. Try, um, do a different name, do, um, Jordan. I, I, I'm mistaken. Remove Jordan and remove Todd. And then type Todd again, but don't select him. Okay. Scroll down a little bit. Oh, you're not in the chat. That's the problem. You're not, it's the investors chat, you're not in it. Okay, try, go back up. Maybe it'll work on Maggot Army chat, 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 tap, tap the top one. Yes, yeah, see his name, his name disappeared.
His name disappeared from, from that list because, um. I was able to, uh, Todd or Danny, wait, you shouldn't.
Todd disappeared, see.
Is it because he's already in that group?
Well, yeah, that's, and that's, yeah, but Danny should too.
Yeah.
But Danny's.
Danny is, Danny is not in this list because it's already selected and like.
Yeah.
This user is already here that don't show the name, yeah.
Well. Yeah. So wait a minute. I mean, I had two names disappear just a few minutes ago. So why is Todd's name disappearing?
From where?
The two field?
Because we did not select it. We selected the group. Like, we typed in Todd.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, we did select a group.
Well, but wait, it won't do that if. Will it do it if, um? I guess he's not selected yet, but I did it a minute ago where both, where two names disappeared. So yeah, this isn't really recreating it. And I don't know how to recreate it, but you see in the logic, it's, it's there.
Yeah, like, um, only like add the group if. If those contacts, something with an if else here. And the members minus, not minus, but. I don't know, small, mine. So I'll share the group. And. Let me see again. Isn't it, maybe you did it with a group that only has. Did, like, you did it with a group. That was a group, uh, now, uh, contacts are removed from that group, like Todd. I'm not sure, lucky for me, you know how it's like you have a group, but if you remove members from it, it only has one.
Yeah, it wasn't like that. No, because it was just, I selected the individual, two individual names and then a large group and the two names disappeared.
Well, um, this is not the thing that I was like, um, this is not like the reason why I brought up this, uh, the issue. I know like we have been to, uh. Two different issues, but like the issue that I was, um. When I discuss is like, um. How I would be able to know. That this user that is being selected in here, it's also a member of this group. That he's just trying to add.
Yeah.
Because I don't have the list of members now.
Yeah, and if you did have the list of members, you could eliminate Danny from the.
Yeah.
Two field and then just put the group, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Jerry, how do we, how would we accomplish that? So like ideally. If you typed out Danny's name there, and then let's say Todd's name. But then you also try to select. Group chat with ten thousand people in it and they're in it. As soon as you select that, it remove, we wanna remove Danny and Todd from that two field.
Well, we do have a mutation for getting all the members in a group.
Yeah.
Do you want me to call that in here?
Yeah, because I can return it from the search. If, if I return it in the search, that's why the search got so slow.
Oh, so it wouldn't be returned in the search? It would be returned after you hit. The group name?
Mm-hmm.
Ah.
But that still could take time to load ten thousand people.
But will, will it affect just this user or will it affect everybody?
Just that user.
That's okay.
Any, anyone, anyone that clicks, you know, the big, the big chat.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's okay if it's just that user.
And it could take. I would say it may take a second or so, because it is a thousand people.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that seems okay. What do you think, I mean?
Yeah, I can do it. I can do it when a user type in a group. Um, while we're doing this confirmation, this model, we do, I mean, not while, but I, we needed before, so. Before this model gonna be show, shown, I will have to, um. To send like a way to get the members.
So wait, yeah, type, what, type of Todd's name, though. Go hit cancel and then type Todd's name, don't select it. Now, there's still the chat on top, because. He's in that chat. So like, as soon as you select that group chat on top. That's when we would check the mutation?
Yeah, when you're gonna press on this one.
Yeah. Okay, and that'll only affect this user right now, right? Not, not the whole, it's not gonna slow down everybody, right?
Yeah, as Jerry said.
Okay, is there any flaw here? Like, are we missing anything? Like, um, so when you do the check, like you would remove Danny. From this two field and just replace it with the Maggot Army chat?
Yeah, because he's, he's already in the Maggot Army.
Okay, and. What about, okay, there is one more question. So what about when it said, go ahead and tap on the Maggot Army? How do we get the proper number here?
I will have it. I mean, we already have it. The proper number here, but now since we have all the members, then, well, it will be just how, how it was before.
It would be how it was before, okay, but we don't slow everything down, because it's not part of the search.
Yeah.
Okay, so this was actually a fairly easy solution. It just took a little while to get here, but is that, does that cover all the bases?
Yeah, for, that's also answer my question that I was having, so yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, but currently evidently, it's not removing Danny. Even though Danny's in that list, maybe he's not, but Todd was. It's not currently removing. So why is that code not working?
I think right now, because I'm only having ten members. Oh, okay, um, let's see, right, it's only moving. Well, you can see Danny's line here.
Danny's, Danny's not, but try it with Todd. You go there, because Todd is there and Amit, so we could try those. But it's still doubling up.
No, no, Danny's not in here, because he's selected in here.
Oh.
I mean, I mean, okay, let's, let's do something else. Let's go, let's go.
Yeah, try somebody who's not even in the.
Yeah.
We could be like John Testphone.
Uh, John Testphone is, yeah, okay, I didn't see, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that would be in the members. I mean, it could be, but I don't think it is. We'll find out. Yeah, so it's not in there. Okay, so now we do.
Yes, um.
It's still moving.
Do we want to remove John Testphone?
Well, I, we wanna remove anybody. That in the, yeah, because this, it goes, it goes the opposite way. Like, you can't click into the two field. If the Maggot Army is, is the only one selected, you cannot click into the two field. Like, we don't let you. Add a person this way. So yeah, it shouldn't, it should, yeah, like, if you're gonna select a group with thousands of people in it, you should not be able to just add one more person to it, because that's gonna create a duplicate.
Okay, so as soon as the user select any group that has.
Yeah, I think we have a rule of more than twenty already, right?
In the code, like in the frontend? I don't think so.
I think so.
Like in frontend, it's all, remember it was ten, uh.
Well, how does it know to not let me tap into the two field for some groups and not others?
Can you read that?
So for instance, okay, so try and tap into the two field and you cannot, right?
Yeah.
Try it. Your cursor's not moving.
Yeah, I cannot, like, I'm, like, I'm tapping into the form, I'm pressing on the form right now.
Okay, now try, um, John Testphone again, remove that one and type John Testphone. Uh, in the two field.
Oh, sorry. I, I'm confusing myself, because I'm like, uh, this is streaming from my device, so. Sometimes I forget, I don't try to do this in a.
Now grab the group on top.
Draw on top, okay.
Let's do a different one with a name, um. Go ahead and, uh, just type John. And, uh, let's go. Scroll down a little bit. Those all groups are in. With you. Uh, try, uh, just do email instead. How are there not, you're not in more group chat? Aren't you in some group chats like prod? We had all kinds of group chats.
I'm like, I don't mean those.
Look, you're not in a group with a name?
With a name.
We had like, uh, we had, um, circles freezing one. Let me add you to that. Freeze, freeze testing, let me, let me add you to that.
Is it, it should be this one. It's, it's not, it's, it's mine. Um, because I keep using it here and there, so this is the one.
Do we not have freeze testing anymore? What happened to that? Guess that was in.
That's in QA, I think.
In QA, what about prod? Prod and QA accounts, how many people in there? Four members? Come on.
Yeah, this thing is good.
Okay, let's try this one in QA. Okay, let's try this one in QA then. Okay, so. Uh, go to plus chat. And then type that, uh, wait, wait, uh, do. Um, yeah, go ahead and go ahead and type that name. What was the name of it? Freeze testing?
Just testing.
Yeah. Okay, select it and then. Can you? Yeah, go ahead. Yes. And then can you tap into the field there?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, cuz it has more than ten people, maybe? But like now do you want?
It has eleven. This is.
Okay, but now do a named group that has like four people in it?
Let me see.
I think there was, yeah, see.
Hmm. I have, but like they don't, they don't have a name.
Okay, go back to the production one. There was one. There called, um, prod QA. Testing. Type, uh, go ahead and hit plus chat. I'm pretty sure you're in it. Um, no, you're not, but I'll add you. Oh, you know what it does? It it just puts all the names down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just did that. I'm gonna add you to it, so. Okay, go back to your lobby. You should see it. Why do I not see the lobby? Oh, the name changed because I added you. So. Are you on a mean BL?
No, it's like it's mine, yeah.
Okay, um, it's all right. It didn't work anyway because the name doesn't carry over. Which is kind of weird. If you add somebody to a named group. The name removes and it goes back to the individual users. So that's a separate thing I'd like to discuss in here in a minute. Um. Okay. Um. So then in QA here. What other groups are you in?
Like this one?
Yeah. Scroll down. Um, the freeze. How about that one with Amit, Danny, Ismail? That one? Yeah. So go ahead and give that. That one has nine people. Give that one a name. That's a good one.
Um, let me, um.
Test, uh, test group. Okay, so then. Should be up at the top. Yeah, okay, so now if you go to plus chat. And you, um. You were to type test group. Okay, add that one. It's gonna lay down all the names, right? So that's is that's the difference. So the cutoff is ten. And this is how we. Cuz like you can obviously click into the two field right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if it was. Over ten. You cannot. Add any more people to it this through this route.
Yes.
Um. Now I need to circle back to what started this conversation cuz we went. In the weeds for a minute, but what was, what were we trying to? Determine as far as. The, um. I forget what were we solving for right now?
So if you just try to add, um. Like a group. Like add like, for example, like Danny. And try to do like. Please try to do this. As a user press on this, I will fetch all the members of this group. To see if any of the other members that are selected. Are in this group, I will remove them from the two field since they're already here. And it's gonna be just a group.
Okay. And. Yeah, so I guess our. Our protection here is anything less than ten people. We, even if the name, the group is named, it still. Throws all the individual names into the two field up to ten. And you can freely. Add people through here, but anything over ten users. You don't, you you cannot have a name plus. That group name. But what happens if the group has no name but? Eleven users? Or twelve?
Well, I count on the members count, like. I rely on the members count to know. It's not the name.
What would be displayed there? Like, what happened when you? Uh, do we have a group? A group name with, we have a group with more than ten people with no name? Did we? Do we have?
It will be, it will be the. The group name as you see in here.
Okay. So it might put fifteen names there, right?
If the group name has.
No name.
All all the fifteen names, then, yeah, but they will, they will not be like, um.
That's okay, I guess.
It will not like they are not gonna be separated one after the other. It's gonna be one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember seeing that. And then you cannot tap into the two field.
If they are more than ten, ten years.
Right, 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 right. Okay. So. Help me out here. Is this covering? All the scenarios we can think of to where we, cuz obviously we wanna prevent duplicates of having like thirty.
It will be one scenario, like let's say like this name. It's not in this group.
Yeah.
Even like this group, it's a ten thousand, so now it's gonna be.
It'll disappear.
It's the beer.
Always bring up like. If we're overthinking like removing the name from the group, because if the person is. That's why I was thinking the approach of just call the mutation. To add them to the group. And that that way that, you know, they'll be in a group whether they're in it or not. Because adding them to the group is gonna be quicker than fetching ten thousand people.
So, okay, so if there's ten thousand and we have a name up there that's not in the group, we don't make a duplicate group. With ten thousand plus one, we just add them. To that group. That's the alternative, right?
Right, but but they won't, they won't get removed from. The list. It'll just be all all handled in the background.
They will get removed from what list? The two field?
The two field.
Yeah. So these are two possible approaches.
Yeah, I I I I recommend just trying to add them to the group because it is more efficient. Um.
I'm trying to think if there's any. Potential consequences to that. Um. Maybe not, um, let me, I gotta. I need to rest real quick. Give me just one second, and then I'll think about this too. Okay, so then. Um. What does it look like? You have a name up there. And then a group name next to it. Do we need? Do we need any additional information? Like you're adding a person to this group or? Does it still? Do we? Is everything function with the current architecture? Cuz when we now we have this logic there, so we would have to remove the logic, right? What do you think I mean as far as handling this? What do you? What method do you prefer?
Well, yeah, the second one, because we will be like the second one, uh, I mean by like. When you use a try to do that, we're gonna add that if Danny is nine this group, we're gonna add him to this group and he's gonna send the message. This way we're gonna making sure. We don't have. Uh, groups that like. Like they're like they're the same. It's just like one member difference.
Yeah, we definitely don't want that, so that'll avoid that problem. Um, will will there be a system message that says? A mean added Danny to the group?
Yeah, right, yeah, because we call that mutation, right?
If they're new. So if they're not already in that group. There's the message, but we have, we have checked our place to prevent it from duplicating.
Okay. So that would. Follow the right pattern. Um. And if they're not new, like if Danny is in the group. The user will just hit send and it'll just send normal. To the group. Right? Like, no one's added. No duplicate group. And we're not trying to remove it. So like, okay, so Danny, let's say Danny is in the second area events to. Group chat.
Right.
Um. And then you select that. We don't want, do we? We should probably remove Danny.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
True.
Well, if if Danny's. We we don't know if Danny's in that top ten. So.
But we will, we don't, we're gonna run the mutation.
Here's.
Yeah.
Here's what I was saying. I I don't really recommend it because it it is. It's flawed to scale.
Yeah.
If it's cool, ten thousand takes five seconds. How long? How much does a hundred thousand take?
Does it take five seconds just for an individual to do that? You have to pageinate every. You have to pageinate through the whole group until you get all the members, but you're not. We're not paging anything. You're bringing up the whole list. Yeah, you gotta get the whole list to see if he's in it. Yeah, you're gonna get the whole list, but we're not gonna display it. That still takes time, like.
I know.
It's megabytes of data.
Really? For names?
Yeah, well, ten thousand of them.
Ten thousand names? How many megabytes is that?
Think it was like, I mean, like one. Like.
It's about a thousand kilobytes.
Data that has to be grabbed from the database and transferred over the network. It will, will take time. It will take. It will take something that is measured in seconds, not minutes, but seconds.
You think ten thousand? Cool, so what? So it's a thousand kilobytes, right? Is that right for one megabyte?
Um, that's a small image.
It's because, okay, what we could do is where we do, where we fetch the group, the group members. Maybe we could. Instead of our pagination. Request, instead of requesting pages of twenty, we could just go add a request like eleven thousand if we wanted to.
That's what I was thinking. We'll just grab them all at once.
Grab them in a single request? Yeah, it's. It's possible. I I still don't know how long it would take.
And what if it's a hundred thousand?
Exactly. It.
But even then, like a couple megabytes, that's not.
If it's, okay, if it's one megabyte at ten thousand, it is ten megabytes at a hundred thousand.
But even ten megabytes is not that big. I mean, we have images.
On mobile data, it is.
Yeah, it is big.
Cuz think about it, yeah, all that has to be like flown through memory, like processed. Yeah, ten megabytes is a lot. For for an app.
Okay. So. So you you prefer to not even. Grab that whole list of names?
No, cuz like, okay.
But you'll still have to count, right? Like.
Yeah, we still have to count.
And what what were you gonna say?
I was just saying because, okay, and I'll just, if you say, well, okay, ten megabytes isn't a lot for a hundred thousand, then I'm gonna throw back with you. What about a million?
Well, if we have a group chat with a million people in it, we.
I'm just beginning. Well, it's like, it's a great problem to have, and it's a flawed problem to scale.
Yeah. I mean, by then we'll be able to do a lot more.
Yeah, I think. Totally, so I totally agree with you.
Could we? Could we manage? Would a hun- I mean, if a hundred thousand, if a hundred thousand took like. No more than two seconds. I would say. Yeah, I mean, shoot, I I'd be, if we can get a hundred thousand people in a group chat, that'd be cool. Um. But if it took ten seconds, that's a problem. Um. And. Yeah, I mean, I get I get where you're going. I I mean, I don't like the idea of anything taking a couple seconds. Um, especially cuz this isn't like. It's not like a really valuable. Thing. So. Well, we do need to check. So so then, okay, so I mean, if we don't bring back all ten thousand people in this case, you won't know to remove Danny.
Yeah.
So there's that flaw.
Well, well. Then he's not, yeah, he won't know to remove it, but he's just gonna try to add Danny.
Yeah, it'll just send.
It'll just do nothing. It it would be a lot faster, guaranteed. Yeah, a lot faster.
Won't hurt anything. So like ideally it would remove Danny, but it won't really hurt anything. Believe him in the two field. Um, cuz it'll still work as planned. It won't create a duplicate chat. It'll for sure not create a duplicate chat?
Yeah, because you're specifying the group key.
And it'll know Danny's in that group because of that.
Right.
I guess. We'll wait, yeah.
We'll be in the group. If we try to add him to the group, he'll be in the group.
Okay, so, yeah, so if there's a name. In there that's not in the group. It'll add him to the group, but not create a new group with one more person.
Correct.
And you're positive about that. Hundred percent because we're calling mutations that we already have. That are literally called add member to group. It's the same stuff that's used by the management interface. Okay, so we should probably do it that way, right? I mean, unless.
Yeah, we can do it that way, just like. Can we not like call the musician, but like in the musician where I'm gonna send the message? Gonna, we're gonna have a new, for example, like additional members. Something like that, so if that.
Hmm. Well, okay.
Depends on how things are in the backend, just.
What about? External, um. Like external, we can add external contacts in here, right?
Like external context like to the musician?
Well, I'm just saying like from this screen, you can look up an external contact. And also add them in. Is that correct?
Yeah, like.
Okay, so we'll have to add that support. I mean, it would basically be just. Adding in the. The mutation to add a user. I mean, we could, you could, um. You could almost like. Use like a GraphQL fragment or something just to make it part of the request. I mean, I could add it. I can add it to the, um, mutation. I I just, I've just opinionated that that it's kind of redundant.
Okay, so we we're gonna go with that or just like I'm gonna call a musician?
I mean, I prefer if you call the both mutations that work. Like.
Okay. Cuz I was like.
We know they're already tested, it's.
Yeah, I know, um, I just, I was like more of like I'm gonna call the first mutation than the second mutation. Say if if each one take them second or something, so it's gonna be second plus second, too.
I don't think, I don't think adding somebody takes a second.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't. I mean, i- 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 I feel like combined, they're still gonna take. Yeah, I still feel combined into one, they're still gonna take that long. Unless I try to do something in parallel, and what I'm gonna do is I'm not gonna run it in parallel. If you send it to me, I'm going to process it. I'm going to add the people first, so then after when you message, they get the notification.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, so I have to wait after the mutation finishes.
Right.
What if for some reason that musician failed?
Hmm. Um. I say we could retry. If it reached, I mean, depending on the error, we could retry a few times, um.
Well, yeah, like the retry is already there. It's like it's baked in and that all like. It's which tries failed mutations.
Mm hmm. Then we could say like to fail members or something at the at fail to add to group.
I mean, I was talking like in terms of the UX, like what's what's gonna be like? I mean, I was talking like in terms of the UX, like what's what's gonna be like? The user gonna send a message thinking now the message sent to this group plus like to this Danny. That will be in this group, but Danny is nine this group. And he'll be like, why? Why Danny is nine this group? I just sent a message.
Well, what is it? What is it? What does it do if you're trying to send the message and that and that mutation fails? Are we not using an optimistic response there?
Like, uh we're not doing optimistic responses. It's it's in the way, I guess in here.
Hey, it's awaited, okay.
Yeah. I mean, this is if we want to be um. Uh super, super cautious. We have. Like two mutations and one dependent on the other, so there's always this case when what if one is failed? But if it's only one mutation and it's failed. And it's held, you know, everything did not. Work as expected, and it's like a front end um side.
I know, I'm I'm just from my end, I'm just like, I'm going to be. Basically copy pasting the code from the add users mutation. If I if I combine the mutations, I'm just gonna be copy pasting the code.
All right, so, okay, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, I said, I'll just call the musician when he's a try to send the message. This way.
Okay, oh, oh, yeah. Hey, John, I just give you a heads up. We pushed our appointment back a couple hours, so now it's two hours from right now.
Cool, that's good. I gotta leave in a couple hours too, so. Okay, so what uh what did we decide here? We're still deciding?
If a user uh select a group that has more than ten plus other like names. Those names will be added to the group and sent a message to them. This way we're making sure we're not, but they were they were not gonna get removed from the two field, the names. They're not gonna merge or squash together. Because we don't have a way right now for it, but um it will be added to that group. Right, Jerry?
Repeat that, sorry.
Yeah, well, we uh agreed on is like if a user try, if a user selected that group that has more than ten. More than than ten members plus some other names selected. We will be added those names to this group and sending the message.
Yes.
But like in terms of the UI, they were we're not gonna merge Danny in these groups. So the user will see Danny, was it, we'll see the the group. But like in the backend, we added Danny to the to the group.
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, we add Danny, right? We try to add him to the group.
Okay, so. What do you think, I mean, and is this gonna work out all right?
Yeah, it's 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 gonna work all right. It's just like the visual. Uh representation of it, it will not follow what's going on with the backend. I mean. I mean, it's not a big deal because this is not gonna be there for this screen. It's not gonna be. On the screen for a long period of time, as soon as user present, this will go away. And the user will get the sense of what's going on if. Because not if, but because it's gonna be like a system message here that says. Uh you added Danny and there's the message, so.
Yeah. True, so, yeah, I mean, it's not perfect, but it's pretty close.
Yeah, I think it's fast. It's not like slowing the database or anything.
Yeah, that's always good. Okay, all right, then um. Do you have all the pieces you need?
Yeah.
Okay, I forget why we even. Why? Why are you even working on this? How? What started this?
Uh what starts this is just like uh. I remember like we had discussion right now. He is at ten members.
Oh, yeah, that situation right there.
Where you're not really adding ten members, but you're gonna add like the whole group.
Yeah, what's gonna say? What's it gonna say now in the?
It's gonna say the correct member count now.
It will say the correct number, and it'll have ten names.
Uh yeah, and he is gonna be always ten names plus.
Plus.
Plus uh the total minus ten, it did so.
Okay, so it'll go back. That'll go back to how it was.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, yeah, great. I forgot this is still in the most so. You'll finish this up. This is your current priority?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so there there's this and there's the other one that I remember they like about like here. Uh forgot about it. So if you go, this is like not a good school bar. There's the sack though. Yeah, so um yeah, here's a. Like when you do a search here. Those should be selected, like for example, John just wanted them. They should be selected because they are members of this group.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's not they have.
Okay, so yeah, those those will be top priorities, so.
Yeah.
Okay, then let's let's uh let you get to it from there and. There are some. Little discussions we had on the side, like the podcast thing. Jerry, do we need? No, we already covered that, right? Wells is looking into that. The podcast play.
John, did you get a chance to look at page two of the core text? We we slacked that over yesterday for approval.
Um I think Jerry just showed it to me.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, is that the, I was gonna do some minor cosmetic changes. I mean, wait, a text or the landing page?
Uh landing page.
Yeah, the one where it has one, two, three?
Yep.
Yeah, I I'll make some cosmetics, but those can be made in real time.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to, we didn't push it live yet as far as I know, so I just wanted to make sure you got a chance to see it.
Yeah, I like it. Um just I'll I'll just do some cosmetic stuff, but um.
Great.
Is it going to apply the fifty dollar future discount or is that all back in ready?
Yeah, it's all taken care of. I already told the managers and if we dispatch knows what to do if they see a client who has that.
Okay. Okay, cool. Uh great. Let's see what else.